Okay, I think we can call to order the meeting. We'll call.
Tyler.
Here.
Kim.
Here.
John, Doug.
Doug.
Here.
And Andrew.
Here.
Okay, is there anyone who approved the agenda?
Someone.
Second.
All those in favor?
I have.
So, it looks like we have one topic today and we have a guest, Jeanette, that was here to talk to us. Not especially, as I would say, interested party. So, I think we could kick this off. Do you want to start off or would you...
Do you want to say anything, Jean, first of all?
Yeah, well, yeah. Of course, a long time ago, we were meeting tonight with the game. I know somebody who got very important messages from up here in another hour. So, you're probably a little concerned about that. So, for that, I'll back this up in the hand. Anyway, you want to use your voice in this way a little bit about what our game is?
That's fine.
Okay.
We've had a chance to talk at the phone a little bit, but if any information you'd like to share with them, that would be great.
Okay, well, first, there's some really long kind of wanted to know what you're thinking. There's a man coming up for sale in their future and kind of love what you folks decide. What I might do on that land, what I might be, or what I'm looking at. And just review a little bit, the original option, June 14th, 2010. And then we extended that on July 26th, 2016. And then extended it to June, August 1st, to 2020. And so, I just want, I know you don't really have a good reason to be in the night because of camp, but I'm wondering what you're thinking anyway. If you're thinking about exercising the option on this office coming up there. And when there are lots of them, they're going to do. And so, I just add my first thought on what you might be thinking about. I know you guys are already planning more along with what you might be able to do here. And then I've kind of heard maybe down the road, maybe by here, because that might be another number two or whatever. Anyway, so I just kind of want to know what's up, what you're thinking about on that option.
Sure. Thank you. Well, and first of all, I do want to just clear up something. So, because this is an open session, we can choose to make, to vote tonight if we decide to. Or if we decide that we need extra time to talk about it, that's fine as well. But just so you know, Jean, that is on the table because we are actually in session right now. So, is there any background that, thank you very much for that, Jean. Is there anything that you would like to add to this?
Yeah, well, just one thing. We really appreciate, Jean, your cooperation with the school district. We've been able to, you know, buy land and I believe this area right here was land that the school purchased from you for the high school building, is that correct?
Yeah.
And you've been a great person to deal with from the school standpoint, so that is greatly appreciated. I just think that what we want to do is we want to talk about some things. I don't know whether the board will want to vote or not vote, but there's some things that I want to at least talk a little bit about. There has not been anything official that we have had. We did some of the long range planning. We said in different groups, and I think Tyler might have even been in the one that we were here when we were talking elementary. One of the things that we heard from that group, and that's not the whole community, that's just that group, but they were liking the fact of where the elementary is now, as far as they like that. It's kind of tucked away, I don't know if you'd say a safe area, that type of thing. That, I want to make sure that everyone knows that was not, you know, 100% of our population are our patrons. That was just some of the people that were there at that period of time. One of the things that we did do, and I don't know if we have to go into it much further because you guys have the information in front of you. We did purchase four acres of land and it's straight south of here. I don't know, the last time I looked, I don't think that they, the beans have been harvested. Do you know if they've been...
I don't know.
I saw it last week.
It's ours, I drove by it. They're still there.
Yeah.
They're still there.
That's important.
I'm trying to see where the cutoff was. The eight's point.
And that works as a project-based learning for our FFA, you know, kids. They have an opportunity to do that, so that's a great benefit. Another thing that I wanted to bring up is the fact that I think is a 12, what's it, as you said, a 12?
12.4.
12.4 is what we're looking at, right, Jean? That we would have the first option. And you've been very gracious about extending that to us at different times. I think if I'm looking to make a recommendation to the board, I would want to make the recommendation, we also want to look at what will we use the land for when we purchase the land. I think that's the crux of it. We're not in the business to, you know, try to farm or be, you know, buy land, but we also have to look into the future. We have to look and see, you know, what we will need to have. I think that our Connor Watson said that, you know, we have to have a purpose for what we're doing. And looking at that. The thing that I look at, I look at what I've heard from the patrons as far as where they would like to see the land. I say that we have the four acres that gives us a little extra. If we're not, that's not going to be if you put a building out there. I don't know that they would, that's where the patrons would want the building to be. I also think that when we're looking at this, we have to look at and say, we're probably going to be looking at saved dollars, is that right, yield as far as, and I think she got some information. There's some financial things in there. My recommendation to the board would be right now that we would not have that need. That's not to say that down the road that there wouldn't be something, and that could be sold and out of there. But my recommendation right now is if we were building elementary down to the current site, we would want to hold on to those four acres that we have. And that way, Jean, can know what our process will be.
Question on the time, you mentioned before that we've got a purpose for a schoolhouse. Is there a time limit on that? I mean, obviously, five years or 10 years or 20 years? Is that a year? Yeah, we can't say that's every schoolhouse, there are five years or maybe 10 years. Or if they say 20 years, is that still the purpose of building the schoolhouse on? What is that?
My understanding is it's in our plan.
Okay.
You know.
So, you have the diagrams, you have an idea.
The district is not to be land owners or to be land users, if I'm understanding correctly.
Your question is a good question though, because when we talked about this, we talked about, and the board members jump in here, but I think we've talked about, you know, seven to 10 years. That could be maybe five to seven, depending on what happens with growth, student growth.
So... How, that four acres you bought, are you not just going to set up? How would we buy that four acres again?
For school purposes. I don't really have to be a school building, so it has to be for a designated school purpose. So, that's how we're going to do it.
Money.
Money?
300,000. 300,000.
Right there, that's right there.
Do a purchase order and it'll be a purpose.
So, I absolutely agree with that. We've got a really nice plan in place and as you've already said, we don't know when that elementary will happen because it's population-based, right? That's why I like where our plan's at. So, we absolutely know, I think with fairly good confidence. Lindsay, I appreciate it, you know, we don't want to say, oh, that's absolutely where it's going to be. That's likely where it's going to go and that likely will be the next building. When I look at this issue, I'm actually looking beyond that, right? So, I absolutely agree with you on the element. We wouldn't need that for the next building project, the elementary. But I really challenge our board to think about, well, what else? Because we're all moving very fast. And I would be concerned that we could get landlocked. And so, I appreciate that too, Jean, that you've been working with the school district on lots of things over the years. And when I look at that, I say, well, I don't see why we wouldn't go after that. But it's not, it's not with the expectation of going for the building line in the next 10 years. It's that we make sure we secure land that's adjacent to this campus. And we can say, well, I'm not sure if this is the latest price, 23,000. Say, well, wow, that's a lot. Well, guess what? That development that just went in South of Gilbert, it's a lot more than that now. And so, land next to our campus here is only going to go up. And so, I don't want to confuse anybody, patrons or anybody, with the, consider that that's where the elementary is going to go. But I really encourage us to look at it long-term. You know, what's after that elementary building? What will we need for this year? Because that four over there, I mean, I didn't envision one all the way to 180 of the campus at some point. You know, we're sitting here going, today, wow, this is going to blow. What is it going to look like in 10, 15 years? So, I might just go out for food for thought. I appreciate the comments on the elementary and fully agree, but I would actually recommend that we consider that for beyond the usual. And that would only be, we'd have a smart plan for funding.
What my reason is, is we have the land on top of that, 180. We can drop this 12.4 acres, we have about 48 acres left in common. My reason is all the verb, that I own that land, the school is on there, right? And that's all that, we rolled in that, because of the school district law, below either of this development that happened, we started out, we're now, that's the, they got option on that, you know, on top of that. And the church on East Flat Road, it doesn't really look like that much, too. But on the right, looking at the school, not that you might allow, but I'm going to hold that for the school. The one around me, and I say, you never know how big this school is yet, but certainly going to be a lot of glory. And I think, I knew that, I want to something that I want by, to enjoy and to be, and then it only comes up once in a lifetime or less. And maybe that will do it for them or maybe not have the opportunity. And so, I'm not really pushing you to do this, I just want to know what your feelings are and what you're feeling about. But I can ask a lot, Jean. And as I like to think about long-term and kind of bring ideas, and I know what, I'm not familiar with your accounting and what you were designing, going to add on the middle high school and so forth. And I was going to really push the market, going to start a new high school. Fortunately, the housing corporate, we thought we had a new business. And then the housing corporate, that instruction cost, the infrastructure and all that. We never really get old money once, I can remember, but I already have a lot. So, I do want to add that kind of reason.
Sure, sure. One thing that I think I would just throw out is food for thought. I agree that growth will continue for sure. I don't know to how fast and how big. We are already a district that is business poor. We don't have very, like, that's a lot of land that we're going to take up that is not generating anything for the city of, we don't pay taxes on that. The city of Gilbert, they didn't get anything off of that. The schools, you know, also in terms, it's also using that. So, just, it's another side of it. I understand totally about the growth, to have a building and if we're thinking long-term, possibly add another building as opposed to building into our existing structure in some way. I guess I tend to think of it a little bit more of, this building here might get bigger. That's just how I, that's just how I see it. I'm not sure that I necessarily envisioned a sprawling campus that goes all the way down.
So...
Just like...
Yeah, and I get that. And so, again, I fully agree with everybody's comments about the next building, the elementary. But this building, we're now going to be 600, right? I think when we design, when we design, it could go to maybe 12 to 14. But that's it. At that point, the cafeteria, all of the, all of the support is exhausted, right? So, at that point, it is bigger now, it's a wall. That's so far down the road. That's kind of what I think this conversation actually is. And I get it, you take out, you take out some taxable land. I don't think that's zoned in the city at this point. That's agriculture.
Is that...
So, that's county, it takes some under county, but nothing away from the city.
There's a development right there across the street, you know? It's been, that agricultural land has been.
But that's actually, the point is, that happens, so what's to stop? You know, Jean says, well, you guys didn't exercise it and here's this development, it's what it just did. All of a sudden, this campus ends.
It does. Yep. It does. I mean, our footprint isn't tight.
Jean, can I ask a question? I don't know, I know that we're talking about this 12.4. Do you own, if you don't want to answer this, you don't have to. Do you own all of the land right around us too?
No, not on, I don't know. We have 160 acres, a lot of all in there. So, the farm next door here is owned by Swanson. And so, as you go on top, it'd be the same width as this, which would be, what I mean, it had a library and me and kind of sprung out some all come day. But it's only the width you have.
Thank you. I wasn't sure how that went.
I guess for me, ultimately, what it comes down to is, I like the options. I know that that doesn't generate cash for you and I appreciate the conversation we're having. If I knew that there was a use for the land, a legitimate productive use for the land before we have to build, whether that's in our ec program, I mean, like, further developing that and really putting our kids out there, I wouldn't be opposed to the purchase or the consideration of it. But to just buy land, buy land and let it sit, I don't know if that's the right use of our money. So, it's not here or there, just buy it.
Where are we at? No, I, because I remember the last one, last meetings we had, we were talking about additional projects that were kind of queued up, that we wanted to look at, that were not necessarily, they were below our goal. Forgive me about this, I'm sorry, I don't have this in front of me, but what? So, if we were to take this money out of the save, is there anything that that means no to?
No, because of that, we're not working on that right now. And I don't know that there's any big ticket items, per se, on that. I mean, the biggest ticket item that was forward was the indoor practices ability. And I don't know that that was like the way they'd take it. That didn't serve us. But other than that...
They were small tickets.
It was small amounts, so no big practices.
Are you afraid of contingency from the bottom?
Um, there was some of that, right? But we'd also put a million dollars aside of our own to as possible contingency. Like, there's leftover bond money that we haven't spent, but also that, you know, some of that money that we had set aside in case there were some really good projects that we needed to take. And I just wanted to make sure, what does this do? Does this, is this an opportunity to cross for us in terms of us not doing something else that was maybe on the dock?
I don't know, it helps, but it's not, I include the revenue and the carried work and the previous share in the other. And then down in the budgeting, I included the million dollars for our, the district portion of the project and then our debt that we're required to. And so, just estimating things, the funds remaining would be, after if we spent everything we budgeted for in save and couple, we would have 2.3 million. And then I just estimated the land cost that we're talking about. So, thank you.
I'm just being honest, this is all kind of breaking from the firewalls on this. And I get it, I understand it. Half my brain says, I don't want to spend money, the other half says, I don't want to pay. So, from my aspect, it's hard to promote this stuff. You guys have been dealing with this for a lot longer than I have when I was there in the college. With that said, I also, you know, I can go back and get, I'm more of a, I'd like to look ahead too. We go back 20 years in this district and we didn't have that. So, you fast forward 20 years, which again, is not that long, you know, it's going to go quick. Well, we're going to have, I don't know what it looks like. I don't know what's intermediate school, or, you know, what's middle school, or real school, or some, I don't know. But I just wonder what's going to be there. And where is that growth at? Again, I have, I lived with this for a week and I haven't, it's amazing, it's much bigger. So, it's hard. But again, I won't watch it. I don't think right now, it's not where our purpose is.
And we don't have to, just not to interrupt you, we don't have to make a decision tonight. I mean, you guys are the ones that make that decision. When we had our conversation, I think that there's some time-sensitive things that you're looking at. That's why we kind of tried to say, let's work with Jean, he works with us. Let's try to talk about this tonight so that we can kind of get an idea. But you will, you can do what you want there, I believe.
Can we be creative? Once I said, I've lived with this for a week, is there a way to get creative to, you know, Jean wants to sell it? I don't, we don't buy it with someone, I have no idea. But I do, personally, I don't want to get landlocked. I don't think that's, but I also, you know, I want to spend the money.
I just want to, and this, this does go into our debt, like, planning for the future project. So, I don't want to be misleading, saying this, we have this much money to spend. It's in our long-term, in our next project.
For the...
To have cash on it. Yeah, so my heart is on that.
I don't want to expect that particularly tonight, but I would say, the first of December, right? I would say, my will, first of December, there are, there is a time limit on that. Now, Jean, for the land, we're signing about, we're going to tell the land, often on the third, April, December. And on the right, we'll, 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 the children, the longer track, whatever the season, you may, because you're a veteran, isn't it?
Oh, big one.
Yes or no?
I think that's entirely fair, yeah. We also have a new board starting November 17th. And I can kind of see both sides of this, right? I also look at Andrew, who's saying, my new board, some new members of the board, not yours. But I also see Andrew sitting here saying, well, you know, that's, I totally agree, we owe you the decision. But do we want to, I guess my question to the board is, would you think that this board could hold on and make a decision here? Or are you suggesting that the next board makes that?
I think we should get this board's opinion and get the next board's opinion too. But we can get all the fact finding that we think we need to do to make a good decision, one way or another. And so, we can pass that along, whatever the duty of the board is. And then we just go with that, with the idea of we have to make a decision right at the center first. And I think, I think, we just, we pass all the information. We need to gather better information, we need, I think we can, all the way.
What do you think, what, I think that's a great idea. What do you think that fact finding is?
Two things in my mind, so I don't know where it came from as well. If we did exercise that now or next year, would there be constructive use for it? Would we be okay, say, wow, we can start this program? Have there been any conversations along that route with John Davis?
No, no. They were just, were very happy to get the four acres out there. It gives them an opportunity to have project-based learning. And so, it's exactly what we're talking about. But no, we haven't talked about it anymore.
So, that would be one piece of meeting. Circle back with their, Jean, John Davis. Okay, if we did exercise this, how much is it?
And when we say exercise this, are we talking 12 or are we talking...
I think it's 12.4.
But not the 60?
No.
He would, he would hold on to that.
Do you want to hold on to that?
Well, my, my dream is true, it's true, what I dream, someday, I hope it's true. But right now, I'm going to 44.
Okay, okay, okay.
We need to have, we really have to take the option on it, further, we're going to hold that, and truly.
Oh, well, that's good, that's good.
Get back to the use of it. The little school, you know, 40 acres, who are land on the west side of Gilbert, before we mentioned, went around. And it was bad, and, through that, we had cheap, poor, best spots out there, where we're going to push a lot of people. And just, I'm sure, I'm not bad, and I'm moving that.
And I think we could try, or also, if our funding, I don't think, you know, might not be able to do it. Well, I think we could, if not, so I don't think you'd be.
So, the other piece that I would need is just, Jean, real clear, Jean, so, this option that we have right now is through August, but you're asking, would we exercise it and exercise it now or by the end, by next August? Is that a question?
Yeah, well, I would say, two ways to go. Mainly, whether you will, you know, the other thing, if you thought you could exercise it as a core, which you already did in January, I would be willing to take a thousand dollars later off because if we sell it in August, then it comes back to take it off. If we can get down to 10, 40, we'll change by the end of January, I'd say, back to 40. But I'm not, I'm not pushing that, I think, that you would take a thousand dollars later off, if you couldn't. But in order to hit that guy, I'd have to, that first of December time, say, I'd have to go ahead and get that survey. I mean, that's not made up at all. It's not, it takes time, but I think from first of December to the end of January, it would be a little bit. But I'd say that's an option for you. And the main thing, if you want to move that, I'm sure.
So, then one last question, sorry. If the board's decision is, we're not in a position, we don't want to exercise this, do you foresee that that would just expire and you're not interested in establishing a new?
A good businessman would say, yes, I want some pressure on that. But for me, you know, I would stand for a public board, you're standing by it. We have good presentation. So, I, my heart is really true, I really do, I would stand it.
And you said, it should remind me, is it a sliding scale based upon market value, right, so that...
Tell him how you figured that. He should be explaining that. This is really interesting.
You know, what the option says, twice a year, the Iowa River, land agency group comes out from the survey. And we use the central Iowa, the top ground in central Iowa. And they give out, this is in September now, $9,773 later. And our formula that we use is 245 times that per year. And so, that, we arrive at that because on you go two years or five years from now, or as far as any year ago, what the value is, the result of just following this formula, they come out September and March. So, you can look it up on the internet, Iowa River, and institute survey. And so, right now, their September one, it was about a 12.4 acre, would be 302,000, $9,633.
What is that for a price or a rate?
For acre, $24,000. Uh, for entry, twenty-four thousand four hundred and seventy-two dollars, that's how we're getting those. And in the middle, around, if we sold, when they have options, we're using the same, I mentioned on that. I think that's a fair way of, you have options, uh, when I'm trying to do, it does preface my, until if the market go down, then I buy cheaper. If it go up, uh, I buy higher, so this is one call on the wire.
So I also can ask, uh, just some information that I received, I don't have a meeting, John, you brought it with us. I'm not from, they, they, uh, we can cash rent and do that and the, the land will not come off of the tax rules. For that will, even though, uh, not ours, but that's the answer, uh, we can actually make a decision. And I just sound familiar with that, that is an option, can we exercise it?
So, um, it sounds like, and tell me if this is on, on track with you guys. Um, I think Lindsay and if we can get with some of the folks here that you mentioned, John Davis and some of the others, they and talk about what, what could that be for current or more near term use, um, of that? What do we foresee in terms of their doing and how they would use it? Otherwise, I think we, as board members, can do some of our own, on bringing on this a little bit. Um, we do have a few people coming onto the board here in November, um, chat with them as well. Now, the issue being the December meeting, their December meeting will not be by the first.
Do you have one on the nineteenth?
The nineteenth, but I think he needs to go by the third.
Nineteenth of November.
Oh, sorry, you buy that.
We'd have to.
You'd have to have the board's decision or the whole board we could hire to.
Yes, 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 it's sort of old business. We could have any other meeting, um, or we could, yeah. You just, I think we're interested in future.
By nature, we are.
We are discussing, yeah.
Yeah.
Maybe we should include it as a board, that's true. Ask, ask the potential board members something.
Hold up to the mic.
I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
When you, when you, when you move on to the new?
The November nineteenth is when they're surrounding, that would be, and so, um, we would be asking them potentially to make that decision on their very first night.
But.
Well, it is a priority.
Well, it is.
But can we still expect you to be there, you know?
Yeah.
We're gonna have a vote in for.
What, what I was gonna say is, there's such a large gap between election and that first board meeting, that there's no reason why we can't have discussion with those who are coming onto the board and make sure that the vote that we make as, under old business, represents everyone involved, right? And that gives us a little bit of time for Mr. Peter to have discussions about use and.
Nothing we got to do, if I mean, it's enough, and, I mean, you feel like this is even, I guess, we in position to even say we want to exercise that?
Well, what we need to.
Cause I, I mean, I'm personally in favor of holding off, I think, but I'm, I'm holding. We'll see, and this is the first time we've got to talk about it.
Holding off on it.
Make a decision and vote, this is, this is strictly, talk about the pros and cons. And what the idea of, we all agree that the decision needs to be made by December first, so that, so that.
Yeah, that's it.
You guys, you know, but that's just my opinion, so I would just be in favor of.
And I think my, my, I'm in agreement, my question here is just, and I'm looking for input from this board, because, uh, this, you know, the members of this board kind of entered in and some of them did. And if we're carrying, we've all kind of carried it through. So my question is, um, not against that, like, I, we're not ready to vote on this tonight, for sure. We need some more information. But is it that we want to consider this and have this up under old business with the board? Or whether we think that this is new business for people? And does it happen? I don't, I don't think that the old board is going to do something that we think is drastic or different.
I think I'd be saying, yeah.
Maybe this can.
And I'd say.
Doesn't matter.
New folks. And I think you want to agree, right? It's the idea of, you know, where decides that you can do this all.
Didn't like that, yeah.
They'll get the feedback too, right?
Yeah, so I mean, I, I would, I think we're going to say.
Yeah. We can be in a public forum.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Public forum.
That's one bad.
So I do think we can respect, uh, Mr. Upstall's request that we have that by December first.
Yes, I agree with you.
Absolutely, absolutely, we will do that. I know Lindsay has said that and I know that the rest of the board thinks that. You've been more than generous and always been thoughtful of that and we would, we would want to turn.
Yeah, I need to track the heat tonight, but it would be good by December, four, five, nine, I'm following you.
Yeah.
Really appreciate it, Jean.
Yeah, great, appreciate it. So we will go and put that on the agenda for the new business on the nineteenth. The new, uh, new business, no.
It's just all.
It's all business, it's all, that's a good decision for it.
New board.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Uh, anyway, I have a question before we go back tomorrow and see, on calling again. Uh, we need, if we're going to have two people present, we only really need one person call in or you both or three, I don't care. But we just need three people to call in. So that they have, you know, people have more options then, but kind of want to know, we only have the phone into, so who's going to call into the phone to the, the meeting? And then we would need a personal phone call on our cell phones.
You can call, but, but well, to my cell.
I do have to admit, like, I was like.
Go trick or treating, is what she's saying, she doesn't need five.
I'm not.
So my call.
Thank you.
All right, that's awesome.
I'm there, dude.
I do have to ask, because I was gonna say, you have other things, we only need her. So how many people have to, does any of everybody have to be here? Because I have to try some of these people tomorrow and I'm a little nervous.
Well, I'll bet, I'm gonna come in person if you're.
So I would like to hold it in my office, but I also, we have the church, so I can go across. You're not in the outfit, out of the outfit.
So call your cell phone and leave it.
Yeah, someone just let me know, I'll just, uh.
You call my cell phone.
I put the number for the office in any call.
Yeah. You're up.
You're up.
Have trick or treating, please.
Yes, you should have.
You should have, yes.
I have, two nine eight, or three one six eight. Is that the office number? It says district meeting room phone number.
I'll just put you on that.
I'll just use that.
And that's the one you want to use?
Also.
That line, it should be on the bottom line, so travel, but kind of takes that one.
You can just call me.
Deb, Deb's gonna call my cell phone and I'll put her on speaker.
If you, if you, you don't have to though, like she said, if you're trick or treating.
Well, let me give you my cell phone and call me if you don't have, so that I can.
Do you want to run the line?
Oh, do we need it to be broadcast?
Do I, who is that? I have, I have your cell number.
Yeah, John, I have.
You don't have to show.
Yeah. That's, that's.
That's our president. Very nice, okay, I think you got it tomorrow.
All right, I moved to a journey.
Sorry.
All those that figure?
All right.
Who's meeting his heart?
Thanks, Jean.
Thank you, Jean.